Said it wasn't, but we can check it.
Well, we say it is.
I know.
We're filling out the application.
Okay.
And so does the state of Florida, I believe, right?
Yes.
We'll, uh...
Check the box.
Check, Steve, when we send it in, check the regional water supply planning box.
And what about water quality monitoring? Do we fit that category as well? I would think we would. Since we're going to be monitoring the water quality as our RO plant gets implemented.
Yes, we will.
We can check that box, too.
Conservation, can we check that box, too?
Actually, I believe it is because we are also concerned about the minimum flow levels over...
Minimum flows and levels.
We already have that checked.
No, it's not.
Well, we have the minimum flows and levels establishment and monitoring.
Right.
Natural systems identification and monitoring. Well, aren't we? Natural systems, I mean, we're... Our wellfield testing.
Yeah.
I've learned a lot about RO plants.
I would use every opportunity that we can to market ourselves.
Okay, so we're going to modify this, um, application. Check Mark Moore boxes.
Yes.
And we're going to add the 15% contingency, so we need a motion.
Excuse me, just one thing. Why do we have Manatee and DeSoto and Sarasota also?
Because that's part of the Peace River Regional Water Authority, and they're going to benefit from our RO. That's one of the ideas, is to provide water to the region.
Got it, thank you.
Regional.
With those modifications, I would move approval of consented agenda item F1.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve F1 as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Is everybody okay, or are you going to take a little break? You want to take a break? Yeah, we'll take a five-minute break. And we were move... We're moving into regular agenda items. The first would be citizens' comments on regular agenda items only. Budget, unfinished business, new business, recommendations from city officers. If you have any comments on those items, please come to the podium, state your name. You have three minutes. Citizens' comments on regular agenda items only. Come to the podium, state your name.
Good morning. I'm Ron Norcell with the Ponte Gorda Historic Mural Society. There is a proposal to fund the restoration of the wall or the steps at City Hall that displays the first City Hall mural. That mural has deteriorated for a number of years because of water permeating the wall due to construction issues. And we asked and hope that the city would restore the mural. I think there is a compromise, and the compromise is that the city fund the correction to the wall that would allow the mural to last into perpetuity. And hopefully, the council or individual members would consider either formally or informally supporting fundraising activities to do the actual restoration of the murals. I would also add that regardless of the mural, the wall would have to be repaired at some point because it is continuing to deteriorate. The Public Works Department has a proposal that they believe guarantees that the wall would remain intact, and we ask your approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other citizens' comments on regular agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we move into the budget portion with the first item being CHNEP budget approval.
Good morning, Sharon Nippenberg, Controller for the city. We're presenting to you this morning the Charlotte Harbor National Estuary Program Inclusion in the City of Ponte Gorda budget. We've worked with Dr. Beavers to put together their adopted financial plan that has been taken through all of their advisory boards and their policymakers, and it is available for you to review. I believe it's a rather lengthy, interesting document. It's on their website. But this is it in a nutshell. It's showing the major EPA grants that they will be receiving, a SWFMD grant, Department, a DEP grant, and then local contributions. And of course, City of Ponte Gorda has always been a contributor to the CHNEP program. The expenditures are rolled up into their staff expenditures as well as their operating. Now, their operating really are a series of sub-granties that they work with. And if you'll think of CHNEP, it's a very regional-wide program, and it's a grassroots movement to educate everyone. I like one of their policy... Or one of their goals is that within the next five years, at least, and I want to say 70% of the population will recollect that they have attended or observed one of CHNEP's functions and now understand the necessity of protecting our environment. So I think it's a worthwhile goal, and I know we're glad to have them included in the city. And this is their budget, if there are any questions.
I would just question the reserve of $7,000. Is that... I mean, Nancy, you sit on the committee. I mean, is it... It's fairly stable, right? Because it's federally funded, and most of these items are fairly stable revenue, so...
Yeah, I would say that it's really nothing that we have to be concerned about here. It's a matter of what we're doing is just taking this from the Southwest Florida Regional Planning Council, what would be in their budget, and moving it into ours because we are the host organization. So that was part of the discussion, was that there's no risk on the city's part for doing that.
Tom?
Could we just have an explanation, maybe enlighten everybody, as to why City Council is approving CHNEP's budget?
As the host agency, the... We are now considered actually the oversight for CHNEP. And so therefore, the state of Florida requires you to include it in your budget, include it in your audit, include it in your financial statements, and therefore, as part of the oversight... Excuse me, as part of the public hearing process, you actually do vote on it.
Thank you.
And you... And we understand that what you're really voting on is that this does reflect what their policy boards have already approved. You are not determining what they're going to do with the money, but that in fact, that the oversight for it reflects what their advisory board and their policy board have already voted on. Zach?
Yes.
I mean, it's... We have to include their headcount in our headcount numbers as if you look at the budget document, the budget book.
Yes, either binder. Either binder.
I mean, that information, when you look at headcount personnel, it's in there.
Yes.
So it's because we are the host organization that we now have to show it, what the Regional Planning Council has been showing for many years.
Okay.
I'd like to move approval of the Charlotte Harbor National Estuary Program budget.
Second. We have a motion, a second, to approve the CHNEP budget. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Thank you. If you don't mind, the... Their... CHNEP's website is at the bottom, so it's just www.shnep.org. And I think we intend on putting a link from the city's website over to their website so that people can find it easily.
Okay, we're ready to move into the utilities budget pro forma.
This agenda item is to introduce to the citizens, and I know council's already aware that we took all of this information to the utility advisory board on August 25th. Prior to that, the original document that you find in the budget book did not include the anticipation of what we would be doing to overcome the shortfall by adding the $22 million financing. I do want to point out to you that the 2015 budget was modified slightly based on three additional capital improvement projects that were modified. And if you have questions about those, Steve Adams, utilities engineer, is here this morning. Basically, it was the raw water program. We found that we could not leave it out in 2016. It needed to be moved forward to 2015, that it is in a state of needing to be addressed immediately, and the cost of the project, based on the study that had been done so far, did increase. The other thing that the director had recommended, and the city manager and utility advisory board thought prudent, was to move the update to the water and wastewater master plan into 2015. It was originally slated for 2016. It's a program that we do every five years. The other... The final change was a small adjustment to the cost of the phase of the RO projects. We had $2 million, now we have 2.3 million that's necessary in 2015. So those things adjusted the need for financing in 2015. Kristen, if we could just move to the next slide. So this slide you're fairly familiar with. The next one, this is what was discussed with utility advisory board. And although we are not looking at the actual rate increases today, that will be discussed over the winter, we do know there is a need for one to deal with the $22 million financing project. So what we put before them were two alternative ways to look at it. This is a smoothed rate increase. It would begin in 2016 and then carry forward for three years, '16, '17, and '18, and it is at a rate of 3.25%. It does anticipate that there would be a SWFMD grant of $1.5 million and a state grant of $900,000. So you do see $2.4 million of intergovernmental grants. And the... It was designed to continue keeping the operating reserve levels at their current levels. And that allows us the flexibility of dealing with all the other conditions that may occur later. So that was one. The next scenario... And it... I'm going to show you the one-time one, just on this one, just so that you're aware, that in... As an alternative to do a three-year smoothing, we could do a one-time. Whether that one-time would be in '16 or '17, again, is a decision for City Council. We showed it in '17, and it would have been a one-time rate increase of 10%. The discussion now is whether we go forward with the project regardless of at what timing we may get a grant from SWFMD. So we showed the scenario without the SWFMD grant of the $1.5 million and swapping that for financing. So in 2016, you see the financing going from 2.1 to 3.6. It adds $180,000 of debt service annually, and therefore, to keep things status quo with the previous scenario, we show the rate increase as being 3.65% instead of 3.25%. So it's a minor adjustment to the rate increase to deal with going forward with this project. The final scenario would be without the grant and without changing the original smooth rate, but using reserves. This would dip your reserves down precariously low to the current standard of the 8%.
Howard?
So if I could frame the discussion. We're actually... We, as a staff, are going to be asking City Council to make a decision today. Not on rates, but does City Council want to sign the contract with Tetra Tech to begin the wellfield testing and permitting tomorrow? Have them start tomorrow. We will continue to negotiate with the Water Authority and SWFMD and the county over an agreement for a pipeline and the RO plant. We're not going to stop negotiating, but as a staff, we think we're wasting time. We have made a commitment as a community that we're going to do the project. So let's get on with it. If the grants come in, great. We're not going to stop negotiating. We're not going to stop asking the state for additional money. We're not going to... We're going to hope that maybe an agreement can be reached, and we can get 50% cooperative funding. Remains to be seen. But the wellfield testing and permitting is up to a two-year process. Let's get started. That's staff's recommendation. Now, so that's the first discussion that we'd like to have council have. The second one is something that we'd like to hear your thoughts on a smoothing rate increase versus a one-time rate increase. Staff's recommendation is smoothing, but we'd like to hear council's thoughts on that. We're not asking for a rate increase today, but we'd like your ideas on smoothing versus one-time. And finally, we'd like your thoughts as to whether we should try and keep our reserves around $3 million, $3.1 million, $3.2 million versus going down to the 1.8, 1.9 level. Staff is more comfortable with the $3 million because it also helps pay for some other capital projects that may come up in our utility program. We can use cash if we have to. We're more comfortable with the higher reserve, but again, that's more of a policy call. So those are the three discussions.
We are going for state revolving fund financing for all the wellfield testing? No.
No. The wellfield testing is not permissible under their rules.
Only the project itself is permissible. So we're going to conventional financing for that project. With the state revolving fund loan of $22 million, what is... What is the policy? What is their recommendation? What is their like for a reserve level? Do they specify what... What are we constrained to with that?
Generally, what... Now, we... The last project we did with them was smaller, and they asked for a full year of debt service in reserves. And as you can see, the debt service on this project is, oh, like $1.5 million annually.
So that was their request for the overall fund reserve?
Oh, they don't reflect on your fund.
Okay.
They don't do that. They will look at what you have, and they will look at what best practices are, and they will... But they don't legislate it for you. They just look at it.
Okay, so we're not getting the funding for that for the wellfield testing, only for the project itself? And is there any contingency built into our project with like the $22 million?
Well, there will be now.
Well, I mean, apart from the cooperative funding agreement, but in that number?
That number's going up.
Reflecting that?
That number's going to go up based on your decision today.
Okay.
We're going to add a 15% contingency.
On the 22?
Yep.
Yes, so basically, that would go to 26.
26.
So that'll adjust the debt service annually by?
Okay, so review with the council, because I believe I was the only one here back when this... We decided to put the project on hold, but there was... There was a smoothing rate increase that was scheduled that we... That we did modify.
Back then, this was like four years ago.
Yes.
We anticipated rate increases of around 16%. If I'm not mistaken? It was... It was high.
It was high.
It was high, and there was smoothing versus one-time. It was higher four years ago. Of course, we, again, based on our planning number, got to base it on something.
The situation has improved since then for the financing part of it, because as you'll notice up here, your current debt is dropping off in '16. So it's very nice timing for picking up new debt. Actually, one year later would have been better timing, but it helps considerably.
Sharon's the only one that gets excited about picking up new debt. Nobody else.
Well, they're finance...
Maybe I should have phrased that differently.
They're finance people.
So the situation for the rate increase is we're dropping off old debt, adding new debt. So you don't... You're not having to consider a rate increase to cover both. It's just an extenuation.
What is the $26 million number going to do to these percentages? If it's...
You mean, when we add the contingency?
It could affect it by maybe 1%. I'm just guessing.
For all of the three?
Of the one-time. So if the one-time looks at 10... What was it? Where were we at? 11.2.
11.2.
Then it would be up to approximately 12.2, 12.5.
Okay, so let's continue with questions before we make the decisions. Carolyn?
I didn't want to make any questions.
Oh, okay.
I would like to make a motion.
Well, we have three things to consider. Which?
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with our RO plant.
Second.
With the wellfield testing.
With the wellfield testing. That we move forward with the wellfield testing.
Nancy?
I was going to say, did we want to have other discussion before we...
Do you want to... Any other discussion before we vote on that?
I think that what we need... Yes, I would like to undiscuss it. I think we should move forward, but I think we need to move forward in that not to appear as being defiant with SWFMD, but that we are moving forward because of the timing and that they already have it in their budget, so we are moving forward in a positive way, in position and in a positive way.
And I don't think I indicated in my motion anything but positive.
No, I... You didn't. I'm not saying that you did. I'm just saying that as we communicate what we're doing and why we're doing it, we do it in a positive manner so that we're not, you know, as much as possible, it's viewed as we're trying to do something in a...
I don't see how they could view the city as being defiant when we've been totally cooperative this whole entire time.
Well, we think we have been cooperative, but on their side, I think they see things differently, so...
Well, because they're being influenced by entities outside of this one, so we can only control what we control.
I'm just... I'm saying that we should be savvy about how we were... How we communicate what we're doing.
Okay. Tom?
I think that it's essential that we move forward and demonstrate to our legislators that we are, in fact, building this project and appreciate their help, and we'll be... And look forward to getting some more help from them as we all are. I think that we need to do that.
I think that's a good message, yes.
I agree, and we're ready to go. I mean, we have a plan. We made a plan. We made a decision to do it. We're ready to go. I mean, waiting is... Why would we wait?
Well, you know what?
No, I'm just saying. I'm just saying, it's time to go forward.
So we have a motion to move forward with the wellfield testing. All in favor? Oh, we have a second. Didn't we already have a second? Yeah, Kim, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, so we're moving forward with the wellfield testing. Now, we need to talk about what the pleasure of the board is as far as this rate increase, not the numbers, the implementation of it. Do we want to do it over three years? Do we want to do it one-time? Nancy?
I had the opportunity to speak with a number of citizens about this, and it's been unanimous that a smoothing is what the... Our customers, the ratepayers, would like to see.
And I think it's interesting to note, too, we've only factored in 1% growth. So if there is new growth, then, you know, over time, it can be modified. So that's one thing I would favor as far as the smoothing.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Yes.
Yes, smoothing.
Do we need to move it? To move that?
Do we need a motion?
Yes, I think it would be...
I'll move that we adopt a smoothing.
Second. So we have a motion, a second, to implement a smoothing rate increase over time based on the project when it comes... When that decision time comes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, and now Howard wanted some input on reserve levels, because you've seen the scenarios. And we know when we get into the state revolving fund, we'll need at least...
One year's debt service.
One year's debt service, which is going to go up based on what this is here. So do we want to keep the reserves?
I would like to recommend that we maintain the reserves at 3.0... Or the rate increase, rather, at 3.25 at this point in time and not worry significantly about the reserves. I'm very hopeful and anticipate that we're going to get the additional funding from SWFMD and from the state, and at this point in time, I do not see any reason for us to look at a higher rate increase. We should keep it... Our rate increases as low as possible for our water users, and I think we should just, at this point in time at least, there's no reason to increase it.
Okay. So she made a motion to target at 3.25% and monitor the fund moving forward that way?
I worry a little bit about decreasing the reserve so much if we were to have a hurricane or some type of thing like that, and we... And, you know, what would...
With the reserve going down.
Or the next one. Sorry.
That kind of bothers me.
We did see that with Hurricane Charlie. We actually lost 10% of our revenue that year.
Right.
When buildings are destroyed and they're not using water, we truly do lose revenue. And it took us a while to recover from that.
And I think, too, there's... You know, this last year, there was legislation that did not pass that would have affected our utility rates as far as the 25% surcharge that we can charge utility customers out of our... Out of our city limits, and that's under attack in the statewide in the legislation. So we need to be vigilant about that. It was a big topic of discussion at my meeting in Orlando last week, so there are... Could be factors out of our control that would affect our fund. So I would say I would support keeping the reserve.
I personally feel more comfortable with that, and I... And I love the fact that you were so conservative with the 1% growth. I mean, I'm very confident that that's going to be higher.
I hope so.
So I don't think we're going to be... Would go over that anyway, so...
Nancy?
Yeah, I would like to see us keep the reserve at the higher level. I do agree that we will, as we pursue additional funding, that it's my expectation that we will not have to see as high a rate increases as this reflects, but this is more of a worst-case scenario.
We'd like to think of it as worst-case.
And so I think that that's a... It's great that we are doing that. It gives us, in our community, all of our ratepayers, the right view. It can only get better from here, but I think that we need to be operating on the safe side.
Tom?
I'm supportive of the higher reserve as well. We have to keep in mind that we do have an aging infrastructure out there, and we have to be cognizant of that and prepare for it, so...
So do you have your direction, then?
Yes, we're rocking and rolling.
Shovels underground.
Do we... Do we need to make any additional motions, or do you think you have the consensus?
Consensus on this one.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay.
The final clarification for you on where we're going with this project is, over the winter, as we get more information, we will provide you with as many scenarios as you would like on what potential rate increases would be. The utility advisory board has agreed that within that $100,000 of funding that they will be doing for the water and wastewater plan, that we will also look at a separate study to do a rate sufficiency study.
When is the last time that was done?
It has been... It's been longer than we think. It's... I believe it's four years.
How many?
At least four.
Oh, it's more than that. We haven't done a rate sufficiency study for...
See, I'm... It's been a while.
Five, six, seven years. Long time. We've been doing our analysis in-house.
And we would like to take... Now that we're doing new financing for not only the water plant, but the big portion of the $6.7 million that we're doing combined between '14 and '15 is wastewater. So we would like the consultants that we hire to look at our impact fees and look at the current new financing that we're doing and do... So this is not just a water rate sufficiency study, it's wastewater as well. Because I know quite a few people have asked, "Well, is this rate increase overall, or is it just water?" And right now, the percentages I'm giving you are overall. But if we delve into looking at each... But if we delve into looking at each on their own merit, it will be interesting to see how it plays out. But it's important that we do that because this will be 15- to 20-year financing.
I think that information would be really useful, yes.
So that will happen over the course of the winter. It is our goal that when you get to the end of the 2016 preliminary budget process in May or June, that we will know what rate, you will have had enough hearings, the people will have been able to talk about it, and so that then that can be announced, and then the ordinances would be put in place in October.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time this morning.
Okay, next we move into unfinished business, and we have the downtown lighting and holiday decorations.
City engineer.
That's not holiday lighting.
Next, we have Chuck here from Petra Tech. Should we ask him where your shovels are?
Want to call him back in?
No. Okay.
Good morning, Mark Gearing Public Works. We had hoped to bring to you this morning a project for award for holiday lighting in the downtown area, and we weren't successful on, in my opinion, obtaining a bid that reflected what the council had directed us to go out and do. We were given $45,000 annual budget and asked to put up decorations on poles and trees in the downtown area. Fifty-six poles and 36 trees on Olympia and Marion. We put the project out for bid. We clarified the bid because we were getting no bidders, extended the bid period, and still got very little response. We're finding that most of the people that sell these Christmas decorations, they do install them, but they want much bigger projects before they get interested and get aggressive in their bidding. We have, we have all the bid details in the packet if you're interested in going with ribbons or banners on our poles at $45,000 a year. But I think the other option is much better, and that would be to go out and purchase decorations ourselves. We have several examples, I believe you have them in your packet, of how much actual decorations, the retail price. And we can purchase these types of decorations, stay well within our budget, rope lighting for the poles, and do it ourselves. We're looking at about $600 a year for someone to come out and wrap a tree with light string. And the cost for installing one of these decorations and allowing us to use it for one year is the same as us purchasing it forever for ourselves. So that's what we'd like to do. At this point, we're finding that it would be very difficult to find one of the decorations that they can deliver to us now in time for this year's season. It took us so much time to go through the bid process that I think we've passed our deadline to order new decorations. And we'll take input from you or answer any questions and hopefully get some direction as where we should go with this.
So the rope lighting, though, is going to be designed to stay up year-round or where?
The rope lighting on poles and trees will be year-round.
Okay. And so the trees, are we wrapping the trunk, or what are we doing?
Just the trunk.
Okay. And you've already targeted the locations for that?
Yes, we have lights in the tree wells of those same trees, and it'd just be a matter of putting a receptacle on that box and then wrapping the trees.
Okay. Obviously, yeah, we, not a big enough project for them to even look at, but I like the idea of mixing and matting, you know, mixing it up a little bit and have different... Because right now, we have the white, the white star, and where you have LED and we have traditional. And I don't really like that look, but I like a variety, like the wreath, something more colorful, I think, than what, than what we have because we are going to have the white lights all year.
But now the rope lighting on the poles will only be just during the holiday season, is that right?
No, year-round.
Year-round?
Yeah.
Is there any possibility, as I know that in one conversation I know that I had with Howard, once we start to do this, people will say, oh, well, what about this street or that street? Because we are saving money by doing this in-house, that we could extend perhaps wrapping some palms on some other streets.
Well, we certainly don't save any money the first year. It would cost us all of the $45,000 to do the first year.
To buy all the new stuff.
So perhaps in the future, it might.
What staff time?
Another question I have is, I know that some of you have been working with the Chamber of Commerce on a project illumination. I don't know a lot about it, but I don't know if it's gotten much traction. And so I'm wondering if something like this where we could do a sample someplace to show what it's going to look like, that maybe it might help generate more community interest and community enthusiasm behind something?
Marion, is there any chance to, like, piggyback any of this stuff, or would we have to just be a sole purchaser? Is there any?
I'm Marion Pace Procurement Manager. I tried that with my nationwide colleagues, and they said only you would bid out Christmas. So I have tried to see if, as far as like the services and stuff, you can't really piggyback that. And I've checked to see if any other agencies had holiday decoration bids that we could piggyback, or if there are any national cooperative contracts we could piggyback, and unfortunately, the answer is no. So we're going to be left for bidding the decorations ourselves.
Well, I mean, I would be willing to work with Public Works to come up with a scenario of what we might like as far as adding more color to the actual decorations since we're going to have the white lights all year-round. Tom?
I'm not sure I understand what you mean. Are you suggesting that on one tree, we have a bell, and on another tree, we have a wreath or a candy? I like a more consistent.
Consistent?
Absolutely.
What about the wreath? What about the colorful wreath?
Well, if Helen could vote by proxy, that would be her first choice.
What about the wreath, a colorful wreath?
Which, which, which one?
Tom, which one was Helen's choice?
Either one.
Either one of the...
I like four. Or it says four, I guess, or the bottom one here. The one with the candles.
The one with the candles? That's nice.
I like the one on the right, the Rocky Mountain pine.
Yeah, I like the more colorful, too, yes.
Actually, she didn't pick the one with the candles.
The elegant wreath isn't bad either.
I would like something that looks a little bit more elegant and no candy canes or Santa Clauses or something like that. I'd like a lovely wreath, either, I'd like either the first one or the one below that with the candles. The other one, I'm not quite sure what that looks like, so.
That's very colorful. I would...
I'd have to see that live.
Yeah, I'd have to see that live.
Maybe...
I can go out for bid on one with the option or do options on both. Just whatever you all prefer. We'll put it in the bid and just list it as far as, you know, these are the options that we're looking at based on the quantities.
Maybe we could get some better, like, actual photos instead of just, you know, off the website kind of thing for the actual ones before we purchase them.
Could we get an actual one?
I don't know if we would be able to get an example or a sample. I could ask if that would be feasible to present.
Tell them if we don't like it, we'll send it back.
I am showing you one option I found this morning. This is a wreath that is a top-over mount. So that's another option that would be available.
Would that fit on all of our lamps? Would that fit on all of our lamps?
We would have to ask for what the inner diameter would be and give them the size of our globes and to make sure what the mounting is. We'd have to do a little bit more research.
Is that designed for hurricane-standard winds and wind?
I think hurricane season's over during Christmas, right?
I like that option.
I love those. Yeah, those are pretty.
We have public comment.
I didn't know I was going to comment. Patty Allen, had to think about that. Patty Allen, General Manager of Fisherman's Village. With Christmas coming up and the orders, are you sure you can't get this in this year?
Majority of the decorations, all the real nice ones, they're all sold out. All you have are basically the season leftovers. There might be onesie-twosies left of a couple of the nicer ones, but for maintaining uniformity of the decorations, we wouldn't be able to do it this year.
What website did you use for the prior one?
Christmas Designers, I believe, and I called them and asked them, and at the quantity of 56, they said our pickings were very slim.
Christmas Lights, et cetera, that's another big one I use, and they have exactly the same. So you may want to check that out. It would be wonderful if we could get this accomplished this year. Understand if you can't, but it certainly would be wonderful if we could get this done this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy?
If we can't get the actual wreaths, can we do some tree wrapping this year?
When is the tree wrapping going to commence?
We can accomplish that. Those lights are easy to obtain. We can have that done for the holiday season.
Good. Okay, so we're looking at some kind of wreath.
Looking at a wreath.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you for the suggestion.
Okay, next we're moving into new business, and the first item is restoration of the historic mural depicting the first city council.
We have met with the mural society. Our facilities manager has got a quote on how to repair the wall so that it will be, we can have the mural repainted, and it won't be damaged. Staff's recommendation is that the city, out of council contingency, take the dollars needed to repair the wall. It is a city wall, and then urge the mural society to raise the necessary funds to repaint the mural.
So is there any way we could do this in-house, or we actually have to hire a contractor to?
We don't have the capability in-house.
Carolyn?
I just have a question. What is the value or the option to install the stone cap in lieu of just stucco? I don't understand what that variation is.
Acting as a city engineer, can I speak?
Yes, you are the city engineer.
I believe it's much more water-protective. It really keeps the water out as opposed to just a stucco finish. And I think that I would recommend that that cap be installed.
Included?
Yeah, thank you. I was going to ask, just, that was my thinking, but I wanted to validate that, so.
I guess I would like for us to see then to go ahead and repair it with the, with the stone cap, because it does need to be.
Second.
Do you want to set any kind of, you know, dollar amount, not to exceed or something like that?
On what?
If we're going to include the stone cap, because this, I believe, is just an estimate? Yes.
We're not talking an awful lot of money here.
Well, we're talking about $3,500, $3,600 as an estimate.
Yeah, I would feel more comfortable saying $3,500, just so we know what we're going to spend.
I don't have a problem with that. I would like to discuss the mural itself. You know, it's, the mural society goes out and raises the funds to do all of these, and it's because our wall deteriorated that the mural is damaged. It's not because of any paint didn't work, or they didn't put the proper sealant on it, or whatever. And I feel that we are the, who have caused the problem with the mural. And I feel a responsibility in at least absorbing at least some of the cost of replacing or repairing the mural, if not all of it.
Kim?
I'm sure we didn't do it intentionally, but I am happy to do as Ron suggested and help with fundraising and participate in that way. I don't really...
I'm okay with that, too. I'm okay with fixing the wall, but I would like to establish $3,500 is the total that we spend on the construction project. Think that would be sufficient to, yes.
Is that with the cap?
Sufficient to extend the life of the new mural as best we can.
Probably be $3,600, but...
If it comes in less than that, can we send, give some money over to the mural society if it...
I think, you know, they should stay as an independent nonprofit because, you know, that's how they're set up, and I would like that. Howard?
Rather than debate what happened all the way back then, there is some debate among people who were here at that time that the mural society was warned that... But rather than get into that, whether they were warned or not, and who said what to whom, we do think as a staff that we should at least fix the wall and keep the process where the mural society raises the necessary funds. The only time we, as a council, changed was, actually, it was a CRA decision to pay for a mural at the Marina Building.
Do we need a motion?
That's the only time I can, have we, yeah.
I make a motion that we approve the $3,600 to replace the wall.
Second. We have a motion, a second, to approve the fixing of the wall. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
And I think that we, as a council, certainly will do what we can to, at least I will agree with you, Kim, do whatever I can to participate in helping raise the funds.
You may want to consider also approaching all of the past council members.
Just, just... So the record is clear. The motion was to approve $3,600 to fix the wall. You announced just the motion was to fix the wall. Do you want to specify an amount not to exceed? I think the record needs to be clear as to what the ultimate goal was.
I think that was it, not to exceed.
Not to exceed the $3,600. Just want to make sure the record was clear.
One of the things, and I agree with the motion, but prices are going up. And when we do a not to exceed, I'm concerned that we are then really crimping our staff in terms of, you know, what we can achieve, so I...
And what happens if it's 37? I mean, I'm just throwing that out there. We approve 36, and it's 37.
It just seems that we're...
Do we put another agenda item on?
Putting constraints on. Then it waits for, then it waits for another council meeting to come back to us.
Isn't this a quote from...
Yes, it is. It is a quote, and we added almost $1,000 to the quote in...
With the cap?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
May I speak?
Sure.
Finance Director Dave Drury. If it was an item that, if you say not to exceed, we would take that money out of the contingent, $3,600 of contingency. Let's say they had a change order, and they found a problem, and it was a couple hundred dollars. We would take that out of our normal budget. We would only use $3,600 of the council contingency and a small change. If it is a lot, then we would come back to you, but there could be some change orders. And you have a quote, but they get digging around in there, and they may find some other damage. If it's small enough, then we'll just pick it up in the normal operations budget, and we can take care of it that way. But you're giving me permission to use council contingency up to $3,600, is what I hear. And then, and like I say, if it's anything, if it's a lot more, what are you looking at? If it's a lot more than that, she's looking at me. If there's a lot more than that, then we'll come back. Okay? Thank you.
That money's coming from council contingency?
There's our budget. Our budget's gone.
What do we have left in that contingency?
Well, you have quite a bit, you have quite a bit left because this is the end of the fiscal year.
Oh.
Oh, then let's party.
So should we, should we paint our faces up? I think it should be the current council repainted out there. A little bit more diverse than the first council. Okay, now we're moving into the City of Punta Gorda Comp Plan Historic Element.
Good morning. For the record, Joan LeBeau, Urban Design. Karen, would you put on the PowerPoint? A little background on this comprehensive plan element. Over the past three years, the city has... Over the past three years, the city has worked with citizens and into developing what you see before you. The urban design group has sought out individual groups. We've talked to agencies, organizations that were involved with and had a passion for historic preservation. Many of the individuals have stepped up from the community to fulfill the need to write the history of Punta Gorda. We've looked at, we've talked with the Historical Preservation Advisory Board, the Punta Gorda Historical Society, Charlotte County Historical Society, and we worked with educational organizations such as FGCU. We were introduced to an adjunct professor through Bucky McQueen at the FGCU, and her name was Lori Coventry-Pain, and she is the predominant author of this element. She had agreed to work with us on the project, thinking it would be a year, and it took a lot longer than that. She didn't realize the time involved in meeting with people and going to different groups and settings and then the feedback that she got. So the element has undergone several changes. It's been vetted through the community. We still are looking for input on it. This is why it's only being brought to you as a draft today. She, it does continue to work on the project with us, and she does believe that this element will bring good things to the city. So with that, I'll go on and, as you know, the comp plan is a required document. It is required by the government. It is required by the nineteen eighty-five Growth Management Act, and we brought the historic element into it. We heard from people in the community that with all the stuff we do for our historic downtown area, we really need to have an element that gives us guidelines and policies to look at as we move forward in protecting our history and preserving it, connecting it to different groups in the area, the different communities, the residential, the commercial, the businesses, et cetera. So during the evaluation appraisal report, we opted to include it into our, our element, our comprehensive plan. And it does strengthen and clarify all the things that we are currently doing in our historic preservation efforts.
How many cities have that in their comp plan? Do you know? Is it fairly common or?
It was an optional element, so not everybody did include it. I found more cities had it, but there is a fair amount of communities, of counties that also include it. And I think it helps if they're very active in preserving their history because you can get additional points if you have policies set up that, you know, encourage this type of protection or utilization of these areas. So this, the purpose for this was to document our past history, our local history, and then provide those policies and directions for, as we move forward into the future, promoting our historic resources for economic reasons, for tourists, for businesses, et cetera. We are, this element does connect several of the existing elements, the future land use element, because we have the historical areas already identified in that element. Our recreation and open space element does have mention of historic resources, and we wanted to connect those through our linear park system. The Punta Gorda pathways is a great, you know, additive to that, and we now have people coming through areas that they might not normally have come through on their daily walks. And then the housing element has policies that exist that promote the protection of these historic resources. So again, it just made sense to add the historical element. Again, we just want to preserve our past. If we don't write it down, we will lose it. The buildings that we have, if you look at our downtown, we have the Sullivan Street, we have the historic district. All of those small, older buildings makes Punta Gorda what it is today. We want to help stimulate the economy as we move forward, and anything we can do to attract tourists and visitors to our area is definitely a plus for all the small businesses and residents, and it definitely improves our quality of life. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So what, what do you, you want feedback as far as the wording?
The policies that we're looking at, you know, are they in line with what we're thinking of as we move forward? A lot of them we have already done. We're just solidifying them in writing so that we have a basis for what we have done.
Yeah, I, I think that it's outstanding. I think it's, it's much needed. The, I know the historic preservation, our board is wanting to have more that they can get involved in and do. And preserving the historic character of our community is so critically important here so that we can, that's why people come here, that we aren't like other communities. So I think it's not just about preserving the buildings themselves, but it's the community at large. One of the things I noticed when I was reading through this, you do, you talk about organizations that, in our community, that are doing something related to this, but you don't mention the Punta Gorda History Center that was newly formed. And you do allude to it, but you don't call it out by name. And I think that, you know, they've signed a contract with the county to occupy space on.
Taylor.
Gray Street. And I'm on the board, so just, you know, for a full disclosure there, but.
We'll go ahead and add a paragraph about them.
They're going to be actively going to, they're going to be housing Vernon People's Collection. So that's going to be a significant addition to preserving the history of our community.
I'll put something together and maybe run it by you.
That would be great. I'd be glad to work with you on that.
Tom?
Yep, I actually just like to point out a script. As I, on page eleven, there's twenty-six. There's a sentence that says, "By the nineteen eighties with growth spreading throughout the county, the Charlotte County government relocates his administration," I think it's supposed to be its administration center, "out of the traditional home in downtown Punta Gorda." So you may want to check that.
I will.
While, while we're on that, Punta Gorda is the county seat, and we at one time did have the administration center in, in the city, and it was pulled out in the eighties. And I'm wondering what requirements, if any, are there for a city, a county seat to have administrative functions? I believe that we have the, the Justice Center. I believe that that is a requirement or is it not a requirement? Or it's all up to the discretion of the, the county?
Yeah, that wasn't a requirement. In order to get the Justice Center here, we provided the land. Same with the Convention Center.
I thought the Justice Center was supposed to be in the county seat. That was a mention.
I'm asking if there is a requirement or if it's.
Not that I don't know.
I, I do not know. I mean, I'd be happy to take a look and see what, what being designated as the county seat entitles the city to. Not that I expect them to move from Murdoch, but I was just, I mean, there is a big spot. Perhaps it would invalidate all of the decisions that we don't want them to pursue.
Carolyn?
Well, I just think it's an excellent document and please extend our appreciation again to Lori Coventry-Pain for her efforts on this. I assume you have a lot of, lot to do with it as well, but I thought it was an excellent document and pleased that it's now being incorporated into our comprehensive plan.
It will, I will do that, and it will come back to you in November as a comp plan amendment to be added to the existing comprehensive.
And so what does that bind us to as far as like government proceedings or, you know, amendments? What, what, what would, what would an example be, something that might come toward the city council that would necessitate us to go amend that part of the comp plan?
Under the statute, any development permit, which includes just about any decision regarding development, needs to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Question, downtown areas considered, is in the historic district?
There are several. We have a designate. There's a National Register Historic District, and then there are two overlay districts.
If, if the, if this comprehensive plan amendment, which chapter had been in effect, would the city have had to refer the lighting of the, of the trees and poles to the historic board for approval for consistency with the comprehensive plan?
I don't think so. There, our policies, I don't believe any of our policies are geared toward that. So I, I. I would have to look at that because I am not sure.
Well, it's just, you know, we do have a historic district, but we also are, need to be mindful of things that we do within the historic district that when we adopt this chapter that need to be compatible.
And so would that go through the Historic Preservation Board or the Planning Commission?
It would probably do require to be, go through both because the Planning Commission ultimately has to approve land use decisions. And then I would suspect that the Historic Preservation Board would weigh in on it before we go to the Planning Commission.
We have done both right now. We have gone to them, and the Historic Preservation Advisory Board has actually been working with us throughout the last three years, and we did go to Planning Commission as well. And they were in favor of it.
So I guess we just all need to be clear on what triggers, what would trigger those next steps.
Correct.
So any new development then would also be impacted by the comprehensive plan. Is that correct?
Correct.